Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call you the Waterloo Schools Board of Education meeting to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next I'll read our mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. So the first item on our agenda here is information from individuals and delegations. And I would ask our Board Secretary Pam Arndorfer, do we have anyone registered this evening besides Ms. Harper?
We do have a few that would like to speak.
Okay, wonderful. So with that, I'm gonna, I have a little something I'd like to say before we start. And so this is the opportunity for people to come and address the board. I would ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and Ms. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds remaining. And then at three minutes, I will ask you to conclude your comments. I do ask that you keep your comments respectful and constructive as we are all here with the goal of helping our students. Please avoid criticizing job performance or specific employees of the school district. These are personnel matters and must be handled through proper channels and not in this public forum. And finally, we do provide this as an opportunity for comment and discussion tonight, but we will not be doing a back and forth as we do not address items that are not on our agenda. So with that, I would invite anyone who wishes to address the board to come forward and state your name and address. And you'll have your three minutes.
Good evening, Board members. It's Dr. Mohorn, Ms. Lindeman, and Kingsley Borchway. My name is Sherry Davis, and I'm the WESP President. It is my second year of being in this position, and our goal is to build a better working relationship between our members and the school board. And last year, I feel like when working with Kingsley and the, some of the things that we've done, we've built some relationships and, and, and working in a better, stronger way. I'm always open to meet with anybody if anything comes up our eyes.
Awesome.
Thank you, Sherry. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Just what you wanna do is be put on the spot, right?
Hey, Sherry, can you just share the leadership team with the board real quick? Just the President, Vice President, real quick.
I'm the President, and then Heather Hovey is the Vice President.
Wonderful.
Okay.
And where is Heather Hovey at?
What school? What building?
Oh, we're all at Hoover.
You're all at Hoover?
Yeah, so Jody and I are at Hoover, and so is Heather Hovey.
Okay, thank you.
Hence the Hoover Hawk shirt, yes.
We, we, we get it, so. Great, thank you for being here. Is Baller, yeah?
Hello.
Hello.
Jody Baller, and I'm at 2778 Crestline Avenue in Waterloo. And I just want to give some updates and say some thank you. So first of all, I really wanna thank Jane and Kingsley for allowing me to be part of opening day ceremonies. It was fun, and it was really well received. I've gotten a lot of feedback from members that they felt, they were excited that we were part of the whole process. So I wanted to thank them for that. We continue to work with our LMC Committee and meetings with Kingsley, and we're talking about having more teacher representation at board meetings, so we have some signups for that. So hopefully, you'll be seeing more teachers in attendance for that. We've also been having ongoing conversations about the spring staff climate surveys and moving forward with those, as well as Ezra funds. And it's been wonderful to be able to kinda give some input on that as well. So we look forward to continued conversations to support our staff and students, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Well, I'm sorry, you two, I read that whole thing for really not anything, but appreciate your patience, so. All right, then we'll move on to item A, which is on page one, and this is our summer school update. It's awesome, I know we have Dr. Mohorn here, and I know we have Jen here, and Ms. Duncan, and I see some middle school principals in the house tonight, so all of them. Oh, yeah, I just can't see behind frost. There we go. Hi, Larry.
Okay, if you guys toggle, you'll be able to see the presentation.
Go ahead, I think it is on.
Oh, this one. That word, that thing that says toggle? Okay, really, come on.
It's, it's, yep. It's coming, it's just taking a minute. Here we go.
There it is. Here, let's get out of there.
Just gotta wait a minute.
There we go, thanks.
And I just wanna start by saying, although we have, we have Annette and Jen for the elementary, we actually have all four of our middle school principals here. And then we have Mike Penning and Ashley Reimer for high school. They have a formal presentation they're gonna do, but I'm going to interject at some different times as well. So I'm just warning you that I'll, I have some things to say also, so.
Hi, everybody. Great to see you all on our first day of school. With me is Annette.
Can you hear that better?
Better.
Okay, there we go.
Annette Duncan was one of our site coordinators for summer school, and so she has graciously agreed to be here tonight to help with, with the presentation. Right now, we're talking strictly for elementary. And we had several goals and a mission that was a little bit different than what you're used to seeing with our summer academy. If you remember our summer academy in the past, we have really focused on students that were, for lack of a better term, we considered our bubble kids, kids that fell in that twenty-fifth to seventy-fifth percentile. And it really was our mission to serve all kids, or any kids that were interested this year. And so that was different. But we really wanted to focus again on fluency and math proficiency, and really help our kids make those learning leaps, especially during our COVID pandemic. So this year, we started out serving seven hundred-plus kids. And I'll show you a slide here. We, of course, lost a few kids, but brought kids in from a waiting list and really provided a safe and engaging environment for six weeks. And so we had six sites, and they served district students. So just because they, that we had listed Becker, Cunningham, Irving, Highland, Kitchell, and Lincoln, kids from Lou Henry, or Orange, or anywhere in the district could attend, and we just placed them at one of those six sites. So during the summer, we all know that a lot of our kiddos will lose two months of their reading skills, two point six months of math skills, and we spend a lot of time in the fall just catching kids up. And so we still had that as our academic focus, along with social-emotional learning and STEM activities. But we really wanted to make sure that we were offering to all of our students. So students that are very high achieving, students that struggle, students who have an IEP, they were all welcome to come to summer school. And so we were able to serve a lot more kids than we've ever been able to serve before. So we, we did target our students first, the twenty-fifth to seventy-fifth percentile first invited them, and then still had, you know, many, many openings. And so we were able to then invite any kids. But we paid particular attention to students who maybe, as a kindergarten or first grader, were on a retention list, a possible retention list. So there had been conversations during the school year with families where concerned, your child, you know, due to maybe attendance, or just a struggle in, in academics, or with COVID, they were on a virtual program and, and struggling to keep up. We wanted to target them as well, and then we opened it up to all. So it was really an integrated approach this year. And our site coordinators, and of course myself included, we really feel that that full inclusion model was very, very effective for us. It didn't put any limits on us, and we were able to really provide a great six weeks for kids academically.
Jen, can I interrupt?
You may.
Sorry, I didn't wanna interrupt.
Sorry.
I just wanna emphasize the fact that we did have a list of kids that, for lack of a better term, we strongly encouraged, that these are the students that really, because of that, that learning gap, or that, that gap that they had, that they attend summer school. And once we got as many of those kids as we could, and we had family support workers, teachers, principals, everybody really even pounding the pavement, sending letters, making phone calls, trying to get as many of the kids who we would say are required or strongly encouraged to come. But then, again, like Jen said, we opened it up also after that, so that any parent that wanted their student to attend could, because we had enough space to be able to do that.
So it says here that eight students made enough progress to be promoted, to be taken off their retention list?
That each student?
Eight.
Eight.
Yes, yes.
So how many did we end up retaining?
We, those were the, we ended up having about twenty-two that we were retaining in K-1.
Okay, thank you.
And that's also not to say, I don't know if this is the right time, but although there weren't a mass of other students that we retained, because all of the research will say, if retention is going to work, it's going to work in kindergarten or first grade. But we did have other students in other grades that we just had to retain because of their academic progress and attendance, and usually the combination. So we did have to retain some kids in the upper grades as well, in the second through fifth.
So we haven't materially changed the curriculum in the other grades to reflect the fact more students are not prepared to start at the normal level?
Changed the curriculum how?
By making it less strenuous.
We, we keep our curriculum strenuous because we know that that's not good for kids is to, to lower the bar. It's to provide that scaffolds for that they can reach the bar, but we definitely don't want to lower the bar. And that's what we've been working with kids all year, to try to help them get to the bar. And then that's also why we had them go to summer school, to try to, you know, get to the bar that they need to, instead of lowering the bar and let, and promote them.
I mean, the curriculum is set by Iowa, by code, so the, Iowa course.
Really, the only, the kids that we're referring to, especially in two through five, for an example, would be kids who maybe missed a lot of school for a lot of different reasons. Or maybe had been virtual for a large extent of the year and just missed out on a lot of, a lot of learning.
Well, you're not doing them any favors, but in the environment, they're, they're not prepared to succeed, so.
Right.
Was the pool a little bit bigger because of 2020? When you said target, and you had a target pool, was the pool bigger this year?
Yes.
Because of COVID?
Yes.
Okay.
And we also wanted to allow any kid that we determined they have to, they will benefit from summer school, and that parents determined, we want them to go to summer school. So we balanced both and accepted everybody that we could, everybody that wanted it, and everybody that we determined needed it as well.
So of those that we determined needed it, what percentage of those students attended? Is that upcoming?
Yep, we're gonna get there.
Sorry.
No worries. Stop skipping ahead, that's okay. We did have a great partnership this year with the Boys and Girls Club as well. So we had our academic programming in the morning and offered kids breakfast. They stayed for lunch, and then they had the opportunity to stay until six o'clock with the Boys and Girls Club. And so that was at the sites. We did not have field trips like would have normally been done, just because so many places were still closed, and we were trying to, to ensure safety there. But we did provide transportation for any and all that wanted it, and that was huge. I can't say enough about Mary and Kelly in the Transportation Department. They were lifesavers, and they could switch on a dime of who needed, who needed summer, you know, transportation and where we could pick them up if it wasn't right by their house. So that worked really well. So when we look at the data, as far as, we still are bound to report data for our Twenty First Century Grant, which is that portion where we used to just serve Irving, Lowell, and Becker students for summer school. And we always had that threshold of eighty percent of our kids, we want eighty percent of participation. So we had a total enrollment at the beginning of seven hundred and twenty-one kids. Five hundred and seventy-eight were enrolled for the majority of the program, and the percent of students that were present at least seventy-five percent of the time, which really figured out to missing only like six days of the program, and that sometimes was for a vacation. We held very strict guidelines to parents, you know, you need to stay away from this six-week window. We gave a week off over the Fourth of July and shifted that. Stephanie had a brilliant idea, and I think that really helped us get more participants, because they knew they had a week off. But there were some kids that were either sick or, you know, just had to be out of town. So seventy-eight percent of our kids were there seventy-five percent of the time or more, and many of our kids a hundred percent, you know, they didn't miss a day. And we could tell those students that were present more often did much better. And so the majority of our kids that were on that retention list that did come to summer school were able to go to the next grade level, so that was great. We still had a few kiddos that, that struggled, but it was a very small number.
So this was a continuous program for the six weeks?
Yes.
Same, same seven hundred and twenty-one, or five hundred and seventy-eight kids?
Exactly.
All right.
Right. So ninety-two percent of our summer students made progress on fluency as measured by the FAST assessment. So site coordinators, like Annette, all the teachers, they did progress monitoring, they checked every week. They documented that progress and looked at how many words kids were, you know, making progress on as far as their fluency, and we know that the fluency is going to relate to their comprehension. And so ninety-two percent of our kids to make that kind of progress, and many kids were making leaps and bounds, amazing progress. And then we also gave pre and post math tests. And close to ninety-five percent of our students, the vast majority, improved their math proficiency. So that's just going to help us now, day one. And there was definitely, it was academics from the very beginning today. You know, there was learning routines and so forth, but already when I was visiting classrooms and several of us were in buildings, I mean, they're starting, they're ready to go. So we were pleased with the progress. And there, I just listed, the top one is a quote from a parent, and you'll notice she said that her child went into this program needing a lot of extra help in getting to the next grade level, and he accomplished that. And then information from one of our site coordinators is listed below.
Questions specifically about elementary. Probably easier if we do it by level, yeah, by level.
How did you determine the curriculum for this program?
We use the curriculum that we use, the resources that we use during the school year. Yep, so math was more of the Engage New York, which we've used before, which ties right in. Bridges, we didn't have all the new materials yet, because that's our brand-new set of resources. And then we used our Fontis and Pennell classroom materials for literacy.
Do you have the opportunity to review what went well during the summer session? And is there anything that you learned from that that might help during a regular school session that you've learned that, with some of the kids, you've seen someone making good progress? So what did we learn there that we might be able to apply that in a regular school year?
I think we've always learned that just that high engagement piece has been the key to our success. Students have very rigorous math, STEM, and reading lessons, and it's monitored very closely. And there's no, there's no wiggle room in that curriculum, because it's six tight weeks. We say it's twenty-four days, I think that's seventy-two hours. We monitor that every week with staff. And I think that closely monitoring our goals and our data every week was really key to making sure that we were putting in interventions when and if needed.
Given, given the level of success that you've seen this summer, do you see this model being beneficial going forward?
Absolutely, and looking at, when we first started this several years ago, looking at all the research out there, a lot of districts do summer school and don't see big gains, but making sure that we do the rigorous curriculum, the recreational activities, and then also leveraging those community resources. Those three components, if you look across research, are what makes summer school effective and makes the data show that it's a successful program.
So did you, did you do anything to make it fun?
Absolutely.
To sustain engagement, what?
Absolutely, and that's what, that's what kept the kids coming back. And kids would have the engaging curriculum, especially with the science, that was a really fun piece. It was hands-on. We were building bridges, building prosthetics, doing electricity. The kids really did like that, and because it's smaller classrooms, we were able to really hone in on student interest level with literacy. And then the math was also very hands-on, the Engage New York. And it was in increments that we could closely monitor to make sure that every student was increasing achievement.
So was it more hands-on than the regular school year?
I would say that with the science, because we're now just really getting into more of that hands-on, that we had more of a, a bigger block for science, which was kind of that carrot to get them engaged. But also with a smaller class size for reading, we're able to group students by interest level, by grade level.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to respond to Aster as well. As far as the model, if I, for next year, absolutely want to include all kids. That, to me, I think that was one of our biggest successes, is that we just provided a lot more for a lot more kids.
Well, and in the past, we've been a little restricted with the grant. But now, this year, this summer, we weren't restricted with just the Twenty First Century Grant, and it was any kid that we see wanted, and any parent that they see wanted. And that's, I mean, that's a first, we've been able to do that, and that's really, I think, has been meaningful.
Well, and just wondering if we would continue a model like this, would it be advantageous to have the dates of summer school out earlier so that people could plan vacations? And, you know, I mean, that people would know for sure, okay, this, this is an option for all students. I'd like my student to go, and so we'll move our Minnesota trip till August or something.
Right.
Would it also be of interest to, you said it was a grant, and this year we had a little bit more flexibility. So let's say 2022, we don't have the same, same platform as far as being able to have as many students. Do you think as a district, we should fund?
We will. It's not should, we will. Like, that's a no question, especially when we've, what we've seen this summer, we will.
Okay. I have one more question about the data of the pre-test scores coming in. So how did those look different with the closure with 2020, things of that nature? How did those numbers look different from the previous summers coming in?
I could talk just a little bit, and you can address that as well. It all depends on the child. To be honest, when we had kids that were virtual all year, if they were highly engaged, they ended the year quite well, and, and they will start this year quite well with having that summer school. If they had difficulty staying engaged and logging in and participating, and did not return to school, you know, we had a large influx of kids that came back face-to-face in December, and that was a game changer for us, because we could really pick up and help some kids make a lot of progress in that half a year. So it just, it, it was a variable with each individual child, honestly.
So the, if, if you look at the cadre, or, you know, teachers, the support staff, all those this summer, were they pretty much the same as during the school year? Or did you pull in teachers from other districts, retirees, student, teacher, what did it look like?
The vast majority were our teachers, which was a huge celebration, I think, and speaks well to them. We thought we would have a really hard time serving seven hundred kids, or even six hundred kids, just because of a very difficult year and people would be tired. We had people, they couldn't wait to start. And so it was predominantly Waterloo School staff, elementary staff. And we had a sub-list of teachers who didn't want to teach every day, but they were willing to sub. And then we had a couple of pre-service teachers from UNY. I think one gal is from Iowa, that have worked or wanted to work in the program and learn more. So we gave them a smaller class, and they could practice in the classroom with a ton of support from the site coordinators, from their teaching peers, so.
So these classes did not require certified teachers?
They did, from the standpoint, we required it for all of our classrooms except for our pre-service teachers, and we had a mentor for them.
Thank you.
You guys don't go anywhere, stay there, but I want, we have some middle school and some high school peeps that I think probably wanna also get some, I know Board you may have more questions too, but we can get some more information out on the floor.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ross Bauer, I'm the principal at Central. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
On this level, okay. Before I get into the content, I just wanna take a minute, and I think it'd be remiss of me if I didn't mention Cora Turner, who, I know I can speak for the middle school staff. We were very, very grateful to have her involvement and support with middle school summer school. She acted as the onsite administrator and collaborated with the four of us. And we just appreciate everything she does always, and especially this past summer with summer school. So I needed to say that first. I do wanna mention too that Hoover housed middle school summer school, and that is additional work for the Hoover staff. So Amy Schmidt and staff, thank you for that too, because I don't know, sometimes people don't realize having something like that in your building, it's gonna take a little bit of extra time and energy, so I wanted to mention that. And then I had said that I would come and speak on behalf of the middle schools tonight, and I just think it's pretty neat that the other three middle school principals are here tonight, so thanks for that too. I really appreciate that team. But I'll go through this information, and the four things you see listed here are areas that we were trying to focus on with middle school summer school. And just to be super transparent, I think we did better with some than others. But these were our goal areas, outreach and re-engaging disconnected students. The 2020 school year and going into 2021, we lost a lot of students' engagement through the virtual learning process, unfortunately, and that was one of the areas where, like, how can we get these students reconnected to us? Offering differentiated instruction, because so many of the students who we had lost connection with, unfortunately, we felt like there was potentially a wider need for differentiation even than there had been previous to that. Broadly embedding social-emotional learning and development. Again, when we lost connection with students, it's so much beyond an academic need, we know that. And then reorganizing the student and learning supports, which kinda ties into that first one. How do we get things back in place that we know were there before? So some changes, in 2020, in the midst of the pandemic, everything was virtual, including summer school. So coming into this past summer, 2021, a couple of things that were different. We did extend the summer school dates beyond what we had originally scheduled. We had the six weeks scheduled as well, with seven weeks on the calendar, the one week off for break in the middle around the Fourth of July. But then actually extending beyond into August 2nd through 5th, and that was based on criteria, that the students were coming, they were still working hard, they hadn't quite met the criteria yet, but Cora and many of the staff members there agreed, these kids are trying to do what they can, if we're, if we can keep them on, let's do so.
Ross, can I interrupt you for the first time, but probably not the last, sorry? And that's something that I really wanted to highlight, is the staff, the summer school staff, they reached out to us and said, we have some kids that aren't going to be finished at the, the end of the six weeks, but they can finish in another week or two. Can we still have those kids come? And we said absolutely, pay them, like, break, like, if we got, pay our teachers, if they're willing to come, all day. And Cora and a group of solid teachers came two, three weeks afterwards. And I can't remember the exact, but I wanna say it was like when we all met, like twenty-five kids finished in, in the last week, but it was, I mean, it was extra. Some kids just needed that extra time, and I, that's why I appreciated the, the team of Cora and the four middle school principals are second to none in saying, if this is what we gotta do for kids, if we gotta extend bus and keep feeding them, if they're gonna keep coming, we're gonna keep serving them. And so that was, that was really great.
So we had seven weeks?
Seven, yep, it ultimately became seven weeks with this additional week.
I think the flexibility is commendable. I think the flexibility is commendable.
Yeah. Yep, and yeah, with the students who are willing to keep coming and working, and we had staff, it's all about learning, and whatever we can get out of that time was a benefit, was more than we had before. A year ago, in 2020, of summer of 2020, that is, it was all virtual, so this time around, of course, we were in person, but we did utilize that online instruction. A lot of the content came through that Edgenuity program again. Social, emotional supports, we had our Success Street therapists onsite available to support students, which we hadn't had that in the past, so that was really nice to have, and I know they were utilized. And then parent, excuse me, daily communication strengthened. And again, this is one of Cora's strengths as a leader. She could really organize the staff and kind of give them the, for lack of a better word, marching orders to, here's what I need you to do today, tomorrow, the next day. There were home visits that took place, there were parent meetings that took place, and just a lot of consistent, you know, parents really seemed to prefer text messages, so a lot of the communication was coming on a daily. Here's how your student's doing, here's what they can do to be better tomorrow, so on and so forth. So those are some of the changes going into summer of 2020. The criteria for us in determining which students were going to attend summer school, we looked at students who had earned two or more Fs in those core subject areas, literacy, math, science, and social studies. So with that criteria, we had 374 students from all four middle schools who were required to attend. Then on top of that, we did offer a voluntary option for parents, if they so chose for their students to come, and we had 41 takers there. And then of those 415 total students, we had 329 who attended in some way, shape, or form. So with that number, of course, we didn't see all the students, and that was one of our goals, was to reconnect with all students. And we, unfortunately, I can't say we met that goal, but we obviously made progress on it. We, we did see a lot of students in summer school who we hadn't seen in our buildings over the course of last year, and every single student counts, of course, so we made a lot of gains with that. But we did have students who didn't attend and/or fell off, came to us but didn't complete. And as we discuss next steps, I think one of the things we all agreed upon is that eighth graders in particular, it's really not good for them or anybody else to, to keep them in middle school, even if it's an alternative option, something that seems more like progress than, for lack of a better word, again, being stuck in middle school. You start to talk about age, you start to talk about a maturity and some dynamics that just aren't good for the students or anybody else. So we ended up with 25 eighth grade students who would be projected to go into ninth grade for the next year, who failed two or more, who did not attend. And the path for them now, and I'll, I'll give a shout out to Kerry Wieland on this, and working with us really well, offering up the Expo Alternative Learning Programs for those eighth grade students to keep moving on. And we talk about the Bridges Program a lot, which is, you know, the term is perfect, it's bridging them from middle school into high school. So that's where the 25 students that I'm referring to here will continue their education this upcoming year, I guess now, started this week.
So these 25 are in the Bridges Program, just, which is essentially the same program as we've historically had?
Bridges or, or Expo High School. We do have some who, and this is where Kerry Wieland collaborated really well with us, and he knows his programming and his staffing, so he took on as many in Bridges as I think he felt he could, and then there were a few who, based on criteria, he felt comfortable enrolling into Expo Alternative High School as ninth graders, where they'll continue to receive additional support in that setting.
One of the things that was important to the team as well is, these eighth graders, we knew we couldn't just pass them along. I mean, that's, that will directly impact our graduation rate, everything. If you remember, a few years ago, when we started summer school for middle school, again, we focused on just eighth grade and getting those eighth graders the cred, the, what they needed so that they could go to ninth grade and be successful. So these 25 are kids who failed two or more and just refused or did not come to summer school in any way, shape, or form, and this is after letters, phone calls, every which way, trying to have them come to summer school, and they just didn't at all.
So historically, how many have we had in Bridges that we're now adding 25 to?
It's not quite 25.
No, it's not quite 25, and all of the kids who will be in Bridges are coming from here, coming from this number.
But, okay, but historically, you know, two years ago, three years ago, how many were in this situation?
I think there were probably 14.
As I say, 16, I think, is the number.
14 to 16 was the max.
Yep, 16 was the cap.
Yeah, but there, we've expanded that program. And really, I think, just, I know that you probably have already picked up on this, but what I would say was, I think what I commend the, the staff for looking at is they were saying, more of the same is not working. So we have students who did not do well last year, maybe didn't attend, maybe just, you know, for whatever reason, not judging, saying, hey, it's our job to make sure that you learn. It, you, you haven't gotten it, so we're going to, we want you to come to summer school, just didn't show up. And so the question, you know, Lyle, just a minute ago, you said, you know, passing them on just isn't, it does a disservice to students, since we're saying, we got to do something different. And so looking for an alternative program for students to, to look for success is, I mean, I think it's commendable, it's saying, we're not, we're not okay with you just passing you along. We're going to do something different. And so that's really where, where, where the students are. And I think also, looking at individual students and their needs, and looking for which students would be successful in Expo High School, and which students really do need the supports of the Bridge Program, which students need this, which students need that, is, is really the right way to go. It's that personalized plan, saying, this isn't punitive, this is, you need, we want to give you what you need in order to be successful, so.
It sounds like those numbers are, are pretty close. Do you have an exact number that went to Bridges? If we teeter with 14 to 16 and all 25 from this year, didn't go in that program, so the numbers are pretty much the same that are going to the Bridges Program?
Yeah, we have a spreadsheet that I don't have in front of me right now, where it literally just had all students listed and where their programming was for this upcoming year, and the majority were listed going to Bridges. I just can't remember the exact breakdown of the numbers.
It's pretty close, though.
Yeah, it would be.
I'm surprised the increase isn't a lot greater than that.
I thought so too, but it sounded like the numbers are, we're pretty close.
Yeah.
Ross, I was wondering, and a couple slides before, just for our general public to know, you had put, they were required to attend summer school. So what does required to attend summer school when they don't come? And what do we do about that?
Yeah, so our expectation, when we say required, it's not just attendance, it's, there's also an expectation for progress and for behavior. I mean, we expect you to be there to learn and to do the work, but it's difficult when our efforts to communicate with the families and get, I mean, there were a lot of contacts and attempts made, and unfortunately, we weren't able to get all of the students in, so now we're at a point where, kind of a summarization of what we talked about here, we, we aren't comfortable just promoting students on when we know there is learning that hasn't occurred that we're responsible for. So when we say required, it's, or else we would do something different to support you, all with the goal of helping you progress in your education, however we can do that.
Right, okay, thank you. And then like Stephanie, would you elaborate just on all the, the methods that the district honestly tries to get these students there? I mean, all the efforts that you guys all did to get a student to attend?
It's connected, it's sending things through the mail, it's sending things through certified mail, and I can't tell you how many of the teachers, administrators, our pair of educators did home visits to, also, and they kept all documentation, really trying to get every single person, and is there, are there obstacles you need? Is it transportation? We can get you on transportation. Is it, you know, they weren't required to wear uniforms over, so we just, we need you in here so that you can catch up on that learning?
So the 329 and the 415 that attended, let's assume they were all successful. That's still a gap of 86 students. 25 went to Bridges or Expo, at least 61, where are these 61 students?
Remember the 40 what?
Yes.
This is all students, right?
Yes.
The 29 is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and of those, a portion of them?
A portion needed to come.
And maybe if we let Mr. Bauer finish where he?
But still, where are the rest?
He's coming.
Six and seventh grade students, yep, no, it's a valid question, it's a good question.
It's okay.
So that does lead into the next piece here, that we had some sixth and seventh grade students who were required to attend who didn't attend or didn't meet the criteria. So students who failed two or more courses, core courses during the year and didn't attend. This is a, a new measure that we're taking this year, so it's a work in progress, but we like the idea that, A, the students are being promoted on to the next grade level. That is something that we ultimately decided, and there were a lot of factors that went into that, some of which being staffing, space, support beyond just the teachers. But an additional measure that we're taking is, we are going to require the students in sixth and seventh grade who didn't meet the criteria to stay after school two days a week, starting at the end of September, with criteria related to the content that they were supposed to have met and learned in the summer months. So we're in the process right now of enlisting our staff, and I, I have confidence that we'll be able to get people to stay on and do this, I really do. And these numbers too, just a quick sidebar, students are our students until or unless they're no longer enrolled with us, right? But I can go back to this, I knocked on a few doors this summer trying to locate some students, and just two come to mind, they're in Wisconsin now, they moved to Texas last week, if I find somebody. Okay, so we make that note, but again, until they're not enrolled with us, until they're enrolled somewhere else, they're on this list. So I can't say this with 100% certainty, but I expect that some of the students on this list won't be in our district, and then it's our responsibility to communicate what our outcomes would have been. But these are the, the numbers we have now, so I think it's manageable, because the numbers you're looking at are from all four middle schools. So we're probably looking at just a few teachers for each building who would be staying after school multiple days a week. And the criteria that we're setting there again is, we expected you to learn this and show that you learned this. Once you've done that, we're not going to require you to stay after anymore. And that's what was the criteria in summer school, was there's a learning expectation. Even though it ran for seven weeks, six originally scheduled, once students met the academic criteria, they'd completed their work, so they weren't required to stay anymore.
So is this the same, same after, is this program different than the Flash or the other previous after-school programs?
It's been called lots of different things. We've called it Flash, we've called it Extended Day, lots of different things. It's just what's done during that time has changed over time.
So again, I ask you the same, is there anything unique or different about this that's going to be fun and exciting and attract students? Like, have we been able to come up with?
For the after, after-school piece of this?
Yeah, yeah, you know.
Or you could talk about the summer school, what you guys did.
Summer school too, yeah. We were, we were fortunate that we had some teachers who were creative and could bring some things to the table from their content areas. There were some STEM-related activities. Some, sometimes it was just as simple too as something on the physical education front and getting the kids outside on a rotational basis, but we know it's summer school, and just that term alone for middle school kids is, it's just an awful term. Nobody wants to go to summer school in a traditional sense. But I think what you heard this morning, or this afternoon, excuse me, from the elementary is that it can be engaging, it can be something other than that dreaded summer school. So we were trying to work some of that in while still keeping the academic expectation that you are here because you didn't pass the classes. So as far as after-school programming right now, I'll be honest, we haven't figured out how to integrate something that would keep it as entertaining necessarily. It'll be interesting to see how the students respond to that, because I think that's, shouldn't be the only carrot that we dangle in front of them, but right now, the, probably the main carrot is, this is the learning expectation. Once you complete this work, you don't have to stay after anymore. So I, I think that's probably more the angle we're taking than the, let's keep it exciting and engaging after school is, let's get this work done and keep you moving through your education.
So these students will be able to go on the activity bus, or?
Yep.
And all of these are just those that are normally eligible to ride the bus?
Everybody.
Everybody?
Yep. And I do want you to talk about, because middle schoolers are different, and so there were some incentives for middle schoolers for attendance, because let's be real, we, we have to do that especially for middle schoolers, and again, I have to give a shout out to Cora and Trish Gannfield also, that they did a lot of solicitation for just donations, for things that kids would want, and they got prizes based on attendance, based on completion. If you want to talk about just some of the things, I know one was like a, a scratch cupcake, because a kid came in when I was there and picked, they finished one of their courses, and they got to have a coupon for a scratch cupcake.
Yeah, and the different grade levels and the different teams kind of did some of their own things, but a lot of it was food, food for students who were making periodic progress. So if you're at this percentage, we got pizza party for you this week. But there were some bigger ticket items, some gift cards from the community that, once students completed courses, their name was put into a drawing, and just some of those things to, to make sure that it was something that, yes, this is expectation of you, but we also want to be proud and celebrate when you do complete the work. So that, I think I skipped over that a little bit. That was something we hadn't done a few years ago, the incentive side of things as much. There was some recognition. I remember Cora bringing all the students into the, the Commons before they would leave and celebrating, but I don't know that there was so much incentives as there were this time around. So I think that's something we keep moving forward to.
Will snacks be provided for the after-school tutoring, the two days a week?
Yes.
We always provide snacks, yep.
Will there still be opportunity for students to participate with sports with the two-day tutoring, or will that be like the incentive, like you want to get this done, but?
For the first two weeks, they're not going to get to participate in sports, just for two weeks.
Got it.
Because that's, we have to have something, because your education is the most important. That, that is the most important. And so for two weeks, and then they'll have to do, which this reminds me of 100 years ago, like the progress report where you have to go to each of your classes and have your teacher sign that, yep, you're doing, this is where you're, where you're, what you're doing during the day, and then they will, because we don't want to keep kids out, because we know for some kids, it's the sports that's keeping them in school, so that's super important as well. But also, so was the academic, so you're a student athlete.
So I'm just looking here, so the criteria was two Fs. Have we looked at, maybe enlarging that criteria? Like, I look at two Fs and say, two Fs in core, well, there's four Ds in core is probably just concerning, because, you know what I'm saying, if we have two Ds, four Ds, that's probably not going to translate that well as success, that's the leader, and should be, be opening that criteria to try to get a bigger number of kids in there to help them, those kids are on a bubble there, succeed as well.
The only thing that I will say for middle school that bound us is, we didn't have the easiest time getting staff. We didn't. And that's not to blame staff one single bit, not one single bit, because I understand, we just had a tougher time getting staff at the middle school, so much so as, we didn't know what kind of program we'd even be able to offer, or if we'd be able to open it up to everyone like we did in elementary.
Is that something we could use, even staff from high school, elementary?
Yep, we did. Yep, we did. We put it out to all of our, because people usually, for middle school, they're usually certified 512, so that's why it's a lot easier in elementary, because you just need an elementary certification. Well, in middle school, I, we need you to have a literacy, you know, a literacy endorsement, you have to have a math, to teach math, and so it's very much more content-specific. So that makes it a little bit harder when it comes to getting staff.
Maybe do something like you did with the UNI students?
Yep, absolutely.
I, I just think that, you know, we got, we got a criteria, that's great progress, but we need to be raising the bar just a little bit more, because?
I totally agree, absolutely. And we, I mean, I'm sure, I won't, I don't want to say hopefully, but we, we do get better each year. We learn, every single year, we learn things for the, for the next year that we can change and improve.
Okay, now Board, can you, can we let Ross just? No, no, it's all right. I just want him to be able to finish his slides, because I feel like sometimes we're cutting off, we're asking you a question that literally, if we would just, I know, I'm, I'm all about the back and forth of interaction, but I would love to let you tell us some of the things that you still want to tell us.
No, it's, it's good dialogue, I appreciate, I appreciate that you're talking about it too.
Yeah.
Uh, but this, this is the final slide, so I'll just kind of sum up what we have here, but I have a, just a couple of thoughts that I'm hearing that I'd like to share too, but, so the students who attended, like I said, was 329 out of the 415, I believe it was. So of those who attended and completed the requirements was 164, which was about half. Completed over 50% of the requirements was about 26, just under 8%. And then that, we did have those voluntary students who attended but did not complete, and just, so I can take them kind of off to the side here, we had agreed immediately that if they were voluntary participants, that they were not going to be in any conversation for retention, because they had already met the criteria not to have to be there, they were not required to be. So it was a task, and it did take some time to sift through the students, and we ended up ultimately tiering the students and saying, these are the tier-three biggest concerns for us moving forward. How do we support the students who are in that tier-three? And that's, that ended up being the students who are moving into the programming at Expo and being required to stay after school multiple times a week to shore up any areas that, that they need to from the previous year. There are still going to be some building measures that we take, because tier-two students were students who were there who made it or didn't quite make it, but were very hard and working toward that. That's where we need to be creative with our scheduling at the building level, and utilizing our literacy labs, our math labs, our interventions through MTSS, through classroom instruction. We, we make sure that our teachers are aware of which students were in summer school, which ones needed a little bit of additional support based on how they performed in summer school. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the staff, that Dr. Mohorn mentioned this, it was not easy to find staff this summer, and I think that was largely because we'd just gone through a, a really challenging year. I'll say it, I was more tired at the end of last school year than I've ever been in my life as an educator. I was. Um, I'll say it, I was more tired at the end of last school year than I've ever been in my life as an educator, I was. Um, so I think a lot of people were feeling that, but we were still able to find um, teachers and paras and um, behavior interventionists, really good support staff to help out. And, and they came together and they were creative and they were very thoughtful about how they supported students um, within the criterion framework that we provided to them. So I want to make sure I say thank you to them. And I can only speak for the central staff, but they came to me at the end of the summer and they were talking about what they could do next year. Um, so I thought that was a really good sign, of course, that they weren't like, never again in my life will I do that, they were talking about next year. And hopefully we can build upon that and, and just solidify and strengthen our staff moving forward uh, for summer school purposes. Um, and then just my last thought that I wanted to share with you, um, again, a year unlike anything we'd ever experienced, and we had more, we had these large numbers of students in virtual learning. And um, Central's numbers, generally speaking, we had just under thirty students of our in-person learners who had failed two or more core classes across all three grade levels, um, and we had over twice that many who were in virtual. And we had made progress over the past few years of dwindling the number of in-person learners who would be required to attend summer school. And I'm, I'm confident now that we have fewer students enrolled in virtual, not that, not that virtual's impossible. Um, we just know that the best, the best system for us is to have our students in our building and provide as much support as we can that way. So, all of that gives me confidence, I think we've got good staff who are willing to come back. I think we'll have fewer students who will be in this conversation for this upcoming year. Um, and I'm pretty confident that would be across the buildings, but I'll, I'll only speak for Central, but it, it gives me confidence that we're moving in the right direction and doing good things.
So do you have thoughts on uh, how to improve the attractiveness and interest in either summer school or after school programs? More field trips, uh, guests from different careers that come in and explain, you know, what they do and what they, whatever. Have you thought about, you know, how do we really take this to a whole other?
I think it's a shift in the philosophy of this, this isn't so much of a, of a penalty or a punishment as it is, it's what you need as a learner. Um, because we don't look at school as a punishment or a penalty, ever, it's what do you need as a learner? And I think sometimes it's been punitive, summer school's been punitive, um, and until we shifted into, we need you to be engaged in this. Because who knows of those students who didn't show up, kids talk to each other, hey, it was actually, it wasn't bad, it was actually kind of fun today. You never know, that, that could start to build, so um, I don't have an answer to that question beyond, generally speaking, I think we need to shift our philosophy. And maybe that's more of a secondary mindset, that it's been a punitive thing, because I don't know that, that's been the case at elementary.
And we started something this year and I'll be, I'll be completely transparent, we didn't knock it out of the park, but we started what we called club time and did like thirty minutes where they could, he talked about going outside, building a robot, just doing different things, things that kids like to do. And I think next year we'll definitely improve that, that club time, because we do want it fun. We don't want them to sit and listen to us all day long, I mean, and listen to the teachers, that's not what learning is ever about. And so we definitely have talked about ways to, to increase the, the club time for, for next year for sure.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll cheer the goal when you see kids lined up to sign up for the program.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't have my mic on.
Before they come up, Lyle, and the board, I just think it is also a mentality shift that, you know, shift that we need to maybe talk to our parents about. Uh, my kid went to summer school and it was outstanding, I mean, outstanding. He um, was already achieving really well, but going, he saw himself almost at the end of where his fast core needs to be for second grade. And so I just don't know if parents, you know, for me it was a non-negotiable, I saw it as an op, an extra, you know, time that he has, can go in school and learn. But I just think that that's another conversation we can have with our parents moving forward.
But shift also has to happen when you're in middle school when it's not cool. You know what I'm saying, when you're in mil, uh, elementary, you can sell about, just about anything, but when you get to be about fourteen, you want a job for summer school, that conversation is a little bit different, so it's, it's hard no matter what.
I think like Ross was saying too, the other options, because there's been a stigma for summer school forever. I mean, I remember back when I, you have to go to summer school, oh, you know, I mean, seriously, that was a stigma. And like Ross said, that has to shift because summer school is an opportunity to be smarter and better when you come back in the fall. And we need to promote that versus promoting, you're coming to summer school because you're not meeting what you're supposed to meet, you know? So I would agree completely.
Needs to be a version of summer camp.
All right, high school.
Hello, good evening, I'm Mike Penning, I'm the East High PBDA coordinator.
And I'm Ashley Reimer and I'm the West High PBDA coordinator.
So we did a lot of things similar to what we had in the past as far as our, at least online learning, we used the Edgenuity platform. Um, we did the same communication that we normally do as far as connected, home visits, mailings, uh, text messages, talk to the students that, you know, we really keyed into students that weren't going to finish an online class they were already in, which makes a lot of sense, or anybody that has failed the traditional class first semester, and then we kind of got ahead of the game and, and sought out students that weren't doing very well second semester as well and started that communication as well. So, we really tried to get, the big one is to finish classes they already started, uh, because it's, it just seems silly to have, have a start a class and have it disappear at the end of summer, in the summer, excuse me. But then we also did hit the traditional students up to, to try to get into classes as well. Um, e- especially our senior group, but, which was a little bit larger than normal, try to get them finished up as well and count them as graduates for the school year as well. So some of the things that we did do different though, however, is we, we added three weeks to the, throughout the, the summer school. So instead of like a six or seven week calendar based on what summer looks like, uh, we did nine full weeks, uh, with once again taking the July fourth week off. Um, and we normally just provided transportation for that June session. Um, so it's either three or four weeks most years, and this year we were able to fund all nine weeks of busing for any student that wanted busing. Uh, we would take them if they, if, you know, if they were closer to west, they could go to west, if they're closer to east, they could come to east. It didn't matter what their home school was necessarily, so we really tried to accommodate that, that need or want as well. And then we, we continued to offer our in-person option and then our virtual options as well. So anybody that took the virtual school option this year was able to stay in virtual. But we also allowed virtual students to come take part in the uh, in-person learning as well, in their, in their building as well. So, we, we actually had a fair amount of students that chose to do that, that were kind of ready to get back, be around people, see live teachers, at least even if they were using the same program they had, or it was another way that they could see, this being away from school isn't working for me, so I can have a struck, set structured time each morning. I can come in and make sure I'm, I'm doing this, and a lot of parents chose that for their students as well.
Um, summer school at the high school level is a little bit different than middle school and elementary. So our biggest push is re-engagement, um, especially for those uh, older kids that we are worried about not graduating or not graduating on time. Um, so we rely heavily on our counselors and our traditional school staff throughout the year. Right around April, really, we um, start asking the teachers who they think we need to reach out to more. Um, the counselors do a really good job of helping us with that as well. Um, and like Mike said, we push um, those students that need to finish classes, that's, that's our biggest, that's our primary goal. Um, and then we go, anybody who, who needs a little bit of recovery, so whether it's one class or five classes, um, we reach out to those students and we encourage them to get enrolled right away. Um, of course, we also have a little bit of acceleration um, for students that are working toward um, making room in their schedules for electives like band, um, Spanish, German, uh, other world languages, or the IB path, or AP courses. Um, so the primary group that we probably have in the summer though would be the students that are recovering credits, um, and finishing those classes.
Ashley, now I need to interrupt you, sorry, I try not to. One of the things um, that you might think is missing and, and it is right now is, we are looking at the data for, for example, how many of our ninth graders, they failed, let's say, two classes, so they only have nine, but over summer school, they made up those credits and then became ninth graders again, um, that, that recovery portion. They had until the first day of school to do that, so they could do it, yep, and so we're still now just working on that data because they had after, today they couldn't do it, but as of yesterday, so they had the day before school. So now we're still gathering that data, but we can um, provide that to you as well as who was reclassified and now, okay, here's, there's our freshman, here's who's reclassified as a freshman, sophomore, et cetera.
And in addition to that, one of the big things that Mike and I look at every day um, would be just that our students are on track with their core subjects. So, for freshmen specifically, sometimes they only get to nine, but it's the nine that really matter as a freshman. So, we did have a lot of students also reach that goal, so they're not quite at the eleven mark, um, to be classified as a sophomore. But they did make up a ton of credits that um, put them in a much better spot moving forward. And those are the conversations that we end up having a lot with students and their families um, throughout the year and in the summer to try to keep them coming to school.
So what percent of your ninth graders are at eleven?
I don't have that number with me. Um, but I would say that freshmen were a big group that we served this summer, so um, we could pull that though and get it.
I can tell you a little bit because we looked at that today and it is down from previous years. So, in past years, we have usually run around eighty-two percent of our freshmen getting their credits, so about eighteen percent do not have the eleven. And, and this year we are below that. And so Stephanie and I, Dr. Mohorn. Dr. Mohorn and I actually met about it today, and so we have a credit recovery meeting coming up and we're actually going to go student by student and take a look at that because it is um.
We're like sixty maybe?
It's higher than that, um, I believe it was close to seventy percent, but that's, for me, that was alarming because that's the lowest it's been in, well, since I've been in Waterloo, so um, well, okay, not since I've been in Waterloo, since I've been in the seat. So let me say that because um, so it's, it's definitely down. And I, I think we knew that because last year when we were every other day at East and West, it hurt. And so we had, you know, I knew that we were, you know, we were getting behind and we did get kids back on February third, I believe. And so we did make some gains this spring, but some kids lost some credits in the first, you know, first semester. So we've got some work ahead of us, I think there's a lot of different things we can employ, but we are, we are down. I, I believe we're just shy of seventy percent of our, of our freshmen having their eleven credits, so we've got some work to do.
And I'll say the, the every other day thing really affects online learners even more, because if I'm a traditional's teacher, I can pace it or I can lump stuff off here and there, but our online learners had to get through still the whole curriculum. So they still need to get zero to a hundred percent, whereas if I'm a traditional, if I'm a US history teacher and I don't get to Vietnam, well then I cut it off early. You know, like, I mean, I, my grade book is just over, right? But in, in the online learning environment, they're still required to get through a hundred percent of their course. So yeah, we definitely saw a lower number of credits or were way behind the eight ball going into that, getting back in a full, full set as well. So, uh, that's something we felt for sure.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to interrupt again, I'm trying not to. But just one of those things that we're talking about, the credit recovery, we have added credit recovery to both East and West for this upcoming year as one of our, our things to, to help kids uh, recover the credits that they need. So we did add additional credit recovery, yep, out of, out of our SR dollars at um, both East and West.
How do students partake in that, is it after school?
It is, yep, yep, it's after school.
All right, so then we just have a quick breakdown of kind of what went down in each building here. So Expo, they, they just did the June session, so four weeks in June, and then after June, uh, anybody that was still working on credits or wanted to start up at that point, could pick either East or West to go to. So, uh, they had anywhere between five and twenty-six people, um, and they earned forty-three credits and were able to get two graduates uh, through that, that June session at Expo. And then I know at East, I think we probably had four kids from Expo that showed up most days after that June session. And I think West would probably?
We had two for sure.
Sounds like two or three, it looks like. Uh, then East, we, we had uh, anywhere between twenty-three and ninety-five kids on any day. We had a hundred and sixty-five kids showed up at least one day, um, and we had a hundred and forty-four credits and we just got our fifth graduate la, late last week, so we got, we got up to five, it was, we, we got there, so he's good.
So the typical student earned one credit.
What's that?
Typical student earned a credit, one credit during the?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, we definitely had kids that earned multiple and then we had some that didn't earn any, you know, came and for whatever reason, maybe dropped off coming, only came for a couple of weeks and went on vacation, decided it wasn't a priority anymore or whatnot, but yeah, I'd, yeah, roughly one a credit.
Actually a credit and a half, right.
And then at West, we um, started really strong, which we do every summer. In that first week, we had a hundred and eighty-two in the high hundreds, um, and then we kind of fluctuated around seventy to ninety, um, that first whole month of June. Um, and then the last session in August, we also had, uh, we kind of went up again and we had between thirty and fifty. Um, and we had ten graduates, um, and I think, I can speak for both of us, that's our favorite part of the job in the summer, it's really exciting. Um, it's really cool for the staff and the students to see that. And then we had about right at four hundred credits, I think we got our last one, like, right at the very end. Um, and that's the most we've ever had in the summer, but again, we went longer and we had the most need for students to come. So this was really exciting for us this year.
Yeah, we, we were on, on the high end too, I don't think we've ever got over a hundred and forty. And uh, especially when you throw in the kit, the students that are in stuff virtually as well, we, I think as a district, we were definitely up at the high school level.
And then we did the virtual program together between East and West, so we did a continuation of that throughout the summer. Um, and then between both high schools, we got a couple of people to work, um, and we had a good, I mean, ten students a day, which I, that actually was more than I thought we would get maybe, um, that came in and tested, or that signed in and tested through Google meets. And we did that um, just for two hours a day, and we did that the entire nine week session as well. So the only time we had a break in there was the um, July fourth week, and then we got eighty-six credits that way as well.
So, why is the credit for, for students so much higher here?
Um, well, it's not the same ten students because on this, they really just come in to test. They only sign in to test with the teacher, so it's, it's a variation, lots of different students.
And all our virtual students would have already started those classes, so they would have been, they could have been at eighty-five percent when summer school started.
How did you all go about reaching, to, you know, finding the students that needed to finish? You know, we heard a little bit about what in middle school, letters, visits, how did you guys do that?
Um, we rely really heavily on our counselors to do that and traditional teachers. So if a traditional teacher, they know that we're the people to go to in the building to say, um, this student's failing my science class. And then we kind of streamline uh, um, an enrollment or a registration form to them. And then once we get that, then we have the, you know, we can go after them and be like, hey, I haven't seen you, and try to get them in that way.
Do we have counselors in the summer supporting this?
Yes, we had counselors from the CCC, um, and there were several counselors that were available um, to answer calls and questions. I mean, I know most of the counselors in my building, so, and have their numbers and they were pretty, you know, if I had to reach them for something. Most of the time, they give us things ahead of time, so we kind of know, especially with our seniors, what they need to have completed and just in case we can't reach someone, um, but yeah, they were available.
Do we have, during the summer, to be able to keep on the kids coming or what?
That's mostly us.
I was going to say, that would be Mike and Ashley.
Do we need, do we need more resources there?
They do an excellent job.
And our, our staff, I have to say, we had um, at West, and I'll speak for West, I think in a typical year, we have about eight teachers that rotate through the whole summer. And this year, I, I had the opposite of what Ross had, um, we had tons of teachers that were willing to step up and um, help and um, sub and keep coming back and rotating with each other, which was really great for the kids too, because then they got to see different faces and connect with someone. And I think the biggest thing for high schoolers is having that adult, I mean, West High's huge. So having an adult that maybe isn't even your primary teacher, but someone you connected with on a different level is really important. So huge shout out to our staff this summer.
Absolutely, ours, it's, it works out really nice that the teachers that want to be there in the summer are kind of more of our high energy teachers. And so yeah, they, we don't do field trips or fun games or anything like that at the high school level, but the, the personalities, I'll, I'll say the personalities that we have in each classroom are, are really good, relationship builders and do a nice job of trying to make that a magnet and a place to be each, each morning.
So it looks like we added three percent to our graduation rate, our four-year graduation rate, so. Are, is there a continuation of this to improve our five-year graduation rate from this cohort group?
Yeah, I know that everybody that was on our list, I, I can't say everybody, but most of the people that aren't on the list that did not get out at the end of four years are already enrolled into some sort of online learning or a fifth year type setting as well.
And we have, um, yeah, like he said, there's a list and we reach out to them, we set up meetings, we work on contracts with deadlines and things to just try to help students goal set. Um, and we also offer an after-hours program four days a week. And we also offer an after-hours program four days a week, so every day but Friday. And we have credit recovery in the building throughout the school day for students that just have, you know, one or two credits are behind it. And then we have P P D A for the students that are significantly behind and need online all day.
Thank you guys very much. Board, I'm gonna ask if you have any final comments. We do have a couple of agenda items that we need to address before six-thirty. So if there's anything further on summer school, I want to thank all of you for being here, the elementary, the middle, the high school teams. Thank you so much. It's clear that we all care a lot about what goes on in the summer and making sure that our kids are all, you know, whether it's recovery, whether it's, you know, just maintaining, whatever that is. It's, um, thank you for your time and for giving it to all of our kids. Like you said, every, Ross, I think you said it best, every single kid matters. We're, we're out there for every single kid. So really appreciate all of you. Board, do you have anything else quickly to say? All right, super. Thanks. You guys have been troopers. All right, and I apologize. We do have just a couple of things that we have to cover before, before six-thirty tonight. So I'm actually gonna amend our agenda quickly and move, you think we, yep, yep, I know. So I'm gonna just, yep, okay. Um, we're just gonna go ahead and go through our consent agenda tonight, which consists of four items. The minutes of the August ninth, twenty-twenty-one regular board meeting, which is item B. The personnel appointments and adjustments, which are item C. Bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, which is item D. And the I A S B legislative action priorities, which are item E. Uh, may I have a motion to put those four items? Thank you, Sue.
Second.
A second. And are there any things that board members wish to have removed? I need to remove and recuse myself from item C, which are the personnel appointments and adjustments. Anything else? All right, then all those in favor of approving items B, D, and E, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried.
I had a quick question for Kingsley about the BIS role and.
We need to get that motion on the table. It's okay. You're fine. You're fine.
Thanks.
I'm gonna let.
Okay, so I would like to put a motion on the table that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the Board of Education personnel items as listed.
So move.
Second.
In a second. Discussion.
Discussion is, I asked Kingsley about this role. Go ahead.
No, excuse me, there's nothing unique. I mean, it's, it's kind of weird because it seems like there's a list of BIS that just, you know, recently resigned. You know, there's various reasons. I think the reasons that came up to mind the most were, there are some concerns about COVID and, you know, working directly with students with the mask being optional. The other reason is there's a couple of our BIS that actually are, have additional certification to be teachers. And so some of them took other jobs elsewhere. But there wasn't anything directly related to, you know, BIS that we could say was, was troubling. You'll see actually on the next board agenda, and that's the tough part I always tell you about, you see it two weeks in a rear, so it's not real time for me. Real time now is that you'll see in the next coming board agenda in September, you'll see some of the BIS positions being filled. So you'll see that backend coming up.
Thank you.
How are we in the filling of other positions?
Um, for coaches, I apologize, I just got that to you. We just wanted to make sure we verified some numbers. But I can run down the list. East, there's one opening for the fall for football. West, one fall opening for volleyball. Bunker, one fall opening for football. Carver, two fall openings for volleyball. And Hoover, two fall openings for volleyball. And Central, there's none. And I also sent that, sent that to you email this afternoon as well during our board meeting.
How many total coaches, football coaches for East?
Just one opening right now.
How many do they have total?
I wanna say about six off the top of my head, but give me one second. I forgot to turn my computer back on. Add the list.
While you're thinking, you said two volleyball at West, is that correct?
One volleyball at West.
One volleyball.
Two at Carver and two at Hoover. To answer your question, one, two, three, four, five, six, I was one off at seven.
So they have seven and they're looking for one more?
They have six, they're looking for.
They're looking for six and they, okay. They can have a total of seven.
Yep.
Okay.
Where do we stand on, I know every teacher, every classroom has a teacher, I assume, but, but in terms of a teacher that has a full contract, you know, that's not a substitute and so forth, how, where do we stand there?
Well, we have some openings. I mean, as you see fluctuations with our, our kiddos, especially at kindergarten, we've tried to add some teachers as needed. We're, we're in a good spot right now in comparison to previous years because we overstaffed. You know, we do have a couple of areas where, you know, as soon as we get done with the meeting and after my son's soccer game, I'm gonna run and, and look back at some of the areas that, I think there's two, if I can fill two spots by the end of next week, I'll feel really good about where we're at, that we've partially achieved our goal as far as lowering class sizes, but also partially made sure that we've gotten teachers in prior to Labor Day. And so we're just in a better spot, but we also did some overhiring, knowing that we'd have some transitions for the fall. And you'll see a little bit about, you'll see a little bit of that actually this year as well. You may even see a K five posting come up in September. I think the more we planned, the better off we'll be, even if we don't necessarily reach out to those applicants. I think for us, what I think held us up a little bit was that our principals and, you know, they rightfully so, were very particular about, you know, getting the best teachers in our, in our, in our building. And so we passed on some individuals that typically in other years we might have hired. But that's, that's just kudos to the students that they get, you know, highly engaged teacher that we're excited about and ready to teach our kiddos.
And then just Kingsley, could you explain quickly the building substitute rule? And I saw that also there's one at the E S C, so just, I'm sure that's a virtual option?
Oh, no, all of them are at the E S C. They're, they're coded here first, but then we, we send them to different places based on their, based on the numbers, based on the unfilled rate. And so we are currently trying to get to, again, twenty building subs across the district. It's a little bit slow of a process. I think Director Williams mentioned it last time, just as far as maybe the information got out weird. But some of the, the next agenda item, I think, may help boost that a little bit as well.
More questions for Kingsley? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have the board president refusing from this, so it passes five-zero. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue, for stepping in for me. I appreciate that. And with you all's grace, I would ask that we move on then to item G and we'll come back to F while we still have Mr. Botchway here, which is, this is the substitute attendance bonus. And once again, I need to recuse myself from this vote, so. I'm so sorry. This is Trains, Planes and Automobiles tonight, so. Thank you, Sue. Twenty-nine.
I mean, if the Board of Education approved the acceptance of substitute attendance bonus as presented. Kenny, interesting logic here. First of all, what's the philosophy? We need more consistent substitutes? Is that the deal?
Yeah, we do. And so what I would share with you is some data from some other districts in regards to the subfill rate that we noticed when we were doing a overall data analysis for subs within the U E N, where, you know, frankly, many districts came to the conversation with ninety-six, eighty-six percent, ninety percent where they are. And I want to be clear here too, communities dictate subs as well. Typically, when you're in a university committee, community, that helps greatly with your sub pool. And so I'm not trying to poo-poo different communities. But the biggest thing is when we had the conversation, they had maybe a six percent drop-off and our drop-off was more like twenty percent. And so we went from seventy to about fifty percent. We, we frankly, I mean, I've been hearing this, and this is why I've come to the board table almost every year with some type of change in substitute teacher pay, we're just not generating enough interest. But one of the things I was hoping to do with this is not only generate the interest by, you know, having a substantial bonus, but also make it a incentive base to ensure that if you worked only, let's say, seventy days over the course of the year, you may be willing to work that additional, you know, get up to a hundred and thirty-seven to work additional time because of that bonus. Now, the trick again is, is that it will happen at the end of the year. So you have to actually work the days in order to get the bonus during June payroll. But this is just another effort to get us, again, close to where we need to be as far as just providing substitute in this community.
And I would add one other thing too. This is, I would really put this under the category of new and innovative trials. When we looked at S R dollars, we were trying to think of things that we really did believe could improve consistency of instruction for our students. So having staff in and out and, and running short and, you know, going without, you know, having not enough subs and trying to cover with our, our staff, we really went back to the table and we said, what can we do differently? Would not, not, you know, lipstick on a pig, not a Band-Aid, what could we really try differently? So we, we had a lot of people on the table. We played with this every different way that we could. And we said, let's try it for one year, let's monitor the numbers and let's see what it would take. And so surveyed, you know, what, what kind of numbers would it take? If it's, if you get a fifty-dollar bonus for working extra days, that's really not much incentive. You know, it has to be enough that it actually changes practice. And so we, this is not a given. This is not how we are, you know, necessarily gonna go forward for the, for the future. I think we just, we decided to monitor this, try it, see how it works for this year. We will come back to you again. So we're really asking for approval for one year to see if this improves the consistency and motivates subs and helps us cover our shortages.
I agree with the philosophy, but I don't like the administrative mechanism here. I'm generally opposed to step functions, which I believe this is, because you get right at that one-fifty-three, one-fifty-four, you end up with some irrational and not necessarily constructive activities to get to one-fifty-five, you know?
What does that mean?
It means that someone might come in sick because I'm at one-fifty-four and if I go to one-fifty-five, they get two thousand dollars or more.
These are the substitute teachers. And you're saying that they would take a job at the, they would take a job, they're substituting for us. And if they're at one-fifty-three and it's the last day of school and they're sick, they would go ahead and come in the last two days just to get to one-fifty.
Yeah. So I would rather see it, you achieve the same thing by go on a per-day basis. So still payable in June, but if you work one, one, you know, and, and I would start it maybe at, say you started at one-twenty and said every day over one-twenty you work, you get a hundred and fifteen dollars a day at the end of the time, then it doesn't really matter whether you worked a hundred and fifty-four or a hundred and fifty-five. It isn't a step function. It's every day you work, you get the same amount of bonus.
I'm not, I'm not following. I'm not following. Because, well, part of the issue, I think, is the system itself. We don't always require a sub every single, maybe vacancy. And so when we get to the end of the year especially, that may not apply where we won't just have a sub pick up a job just to pick up a job just for coverage. We typically just have no sub if that's the case. Now, it's more where we're really trying to make sure that, you know, we have that continuity of content. And so I guess, but what do you mean by the step function? I'm confused.
Well, it appears to me that if you work a hundred and thirty-six days, you don't get any bonus. If you work a hundred and thirty-seven, you get two thousand dollars.
Correct.
All right. And if you work a hundred and fifty-four, you get two thousand dollars. If you work a hundred and fifty-five, you get four thousand.
Right.
All right. That usually doesn't work well in execution. It's more, it, you proportionate. So every day from one-thirty-seven to one-fifty-five, you accumulate a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty.
Your rate goes to one-fifteen. If you're above one-thirty-seven, your rate goes to one-twenty-five at one-fifty-five.
So you know, so you just make a continuum. If you work more days, you're gonna get more bonus money, but you eliminate that. The step is one-day steps instead of, instead of fifteen-day steps.
Potentially, I think part of the, part of the issue is some of the confusion that we have at the board table as far as how we are, how we would administer and let people know that is just, when you see this or some shock value as far as, you know, hey, I'm gonna get this amount of money when I get hit this amount of days. And the days aren't just by, you know, throwing out a number. If you look at that, a hundred and seventy-two days are contact student days. And so I literally was looking at, if you work the entire year, every single student contact day, this is what you get. Breaking it down then from just a ten percent percentage, because we typically see drop-offs when it comes to that ten percent percentage each, each way down the road. But I see what you mean. I mean, you're, you're basically saying at one-thirty, at, no, at one-thirty-seven, within one-thirty-eight, there's some type of incremental increase to get you up to ninety percent or at the one-fifty-five at that timeframe.
Or even centered wise, if you, you know, say there's two weeks left, you're at one-thirty-seven, you got no chance to get to one-fifty-five. You might say, I'm not gonna get extra bonus, so I'm not gonna worry about it. But by doing that, they might incentivize them to work that last two weeks as well.
So if you, if you work one, if you work one-seventy-one days, if you miss a day, you're not gonna get the six thousand. So you might as well miss fifteen days. There's no saying to.
But if you're working a hundred and seventy days already, I don't think the sub actually has the ability to say a hundred percent in their mind, they're gonna get a sub job called for that day.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so the, the sub doesn't necessarily, you can't bank on getting called.
Oh, but again, you know, the whole, I don't know, a whole lot of other things. Cause now you got the subs lobbying for another day because that, because of that step function. I think the steps are way too big.
I guess my question for the board for today, I mean, if there's willing to be, I would just ask our subs, honestly, um, to see their, their thought on the matter. It doesn't necessarily change. I think the money. Jane, are you doing the math right now? In my head, I did it and I don't think I see the money change. I can, I can see your incentive argument.
Was it, I know it sounds, I'm throwing this out there, does it, it sounds like it was a lot of work. Would it be easier, less cumbersome if you didn't have the steps, like versus days?
Yeah, it's not as much work as far as our end. It's, well, it will be as far as like calculating each particular person in that sense. But, you know, we're not ashamed, we're not, you know, we're not gonna shy away from work if it works. I think the biggest thing is, is explaining it.
Trying to figure out, like, am I here? Would it just, you know, I've worked this many days, that seems a little bit easier. But am I enough for this step? It just.
With just having to set them out?
Yeah, yes, I'm saying, I'm saying.
The explanation is, I think, part of the reason why we broke it down, because it's just simply something that we can just say, here, this is what was happening. But.
Would it, I, I'm trying to accomplish, so what I think I hear you saying is, once they've reached a particular threshold, their per diem day just changes. So, so what we're talking about is, so a, a, a substitute teacher who teaches a hundred and thirty-seven days, that extra time is, is worth two thousand dollars. That many days times the extra fifteen, that's two thousand dollars. So if they work a hundred and fifty under this potentially proposed model, they worked additional thirty, thirteen days. Under the proposed model, they don't get anything additional per day except for that fifteen dollars. They, they don't move up past the fifteen dollars per diem. You're, so if they worked a hundred and fifty days, they would get twenty-two hundred dollars, twenty-two fifty. So they would make an extra two hundred and fifty dollars for working a hundred, that's what.
No.
In bonus money.
Yeah, in bonus money, right. It's a hundred, so I.
It's over a hundred dollars a day, so if they work an extra ten days, that's an extra thousand dollars.
An extra or they're above and beyond? I'm talking about above and beyond what they would have made.
Yeah, if they're making two thousand and thirty-seven days and they make, and they work a hundred and forty-seven days, in this model, they don't get any more money. And, uh, and if you had a daily step function, they would get thirty-two hundred dollars or something like that.
My understanding is that, the way we're breaking it down is that we're giving the bonus ahead of time. Is that, I mean, my understanding was that as, as you get, once you get to two thousand dollars, the two thousand dollars is then broken down ahead of time. So we, we, we give them that money ahead of time, so when we get to the next, it incentivizes you to continue to work to the next group, but you don't get the four thousand dollar bonus.
But I think what he's saying, there's, there's room for a lot. You know, somebody coming to work sick if they know they're two days away from getting two thousand dollar bonus. I I there there's.
I don't, I mean, I think part of I think part of what we may be trying to do here is that maybe the conversation between the teacher and the and the sub to make that work. But you know, I would say teachers want to be in the building as much as possible. I mean, this is just more to incentivize the situation. I don't I don't see our teachers stating that I need to be sick two days just to make sure that's individual gets paid more.
I'm okay trying as is, but we might be work revisiting in the future too to see if her, you know, is there another methodology that would.
But I do think that it does create um an appreciation for our teachers that commit to long term subs. And I think we want to do that. I I think we want to appreciate the staff, the substitute staff that wants to come in all the time.
Yeah.
And and so I think that's accomplishing it, whether there could be a better methodology of accomplishing that, we could maybe discuss that. But I do think that at this point, and I'd like to see something too even like this with maybe Paris. I mean, I don't know, but I just think if we have the extra Ether Dollars, I think we need to reward the people that are are very important to the functions of our building and our classrooms. And this little bit of money, if indeed it's going to say, well, I'll come in two more days and do subbing instead of going to the library and reading, I'll do that. I mean.
And I'm not disagreeing with the philosophy nor the money, I'm just saying the steps are too large to.
What we could do is we could, you know, we could relook at this and add a couple more cut points where the rate changes. If you would like us to do that, I I actually think we're not that far off. I'm not, to be honest, I'm not really sure I understand what you're proposing, but yet, you know, we could we could talk, we could do a couple things, I guess. I would I would say that we could either just table this and come back to you two weeks from now with a another proposal after working with you and understanding what you're talking about. Or we could um we could approve this one and then come back to you with an amended one. I just, I'm not, I just am not sure that I understand what you're asking for as far as a different rate that steps. I think either way we do it, I think what you're talking about seems like a step as well, so I'm not sure.
Well, and I would just say, I mean, what I'm what I'm hearing right now is some at least consensus to approve this proposal. But I'm more than willing to go to our subs and and look at, you know, some additional modifications and see what they say. I I wanted, I kind of, I want to test the waters to see the interest and I'm I'm worried about pushing it a little bit further just because the incentive is now. And so because the how we calculated the days, incentive is immediate to make sure that they're aware of it.
One hundred and seventy two, we don't start now, you don't.
I think we have to either start with this now or then say we can't do it this year for the fact that our next board meeting is in fourteen days and you're already down to level two or more than that. So I think we have to give the incentive out now if we're going to, that's my opinion.
All right. I I propose to amend this by saying instead of three steps, because it's thirty five days between a hundred and thirty seven and a hundred and seventy two, that we go to a di- thirty five steps instead of three. All ends up the same, money wise.
I see what he's, I I you're basically giving the money ahead of time, is that what I'm understanding?
I'm getting it given at the same time you're giving this, it's just, it's calculated.
No, 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 I know what you're saying, I'm saying you're giving, you're not giving the money ahead of time, you're giving the money ahead of time per day. I see what he means, you're you're shifting the incentive per day, it won't matter on the back end because what I hear you say, for example, for two, if you get to one thirty seven, every single day you'll have an incremental increase when until you get to the one fifty five. Yes, it it works.
Except for that it doesn't, if you are at one thirty, if you're at one thirty seven, there's motivation to do one thirty eight, but there's really no motivation to do one fifty five because there's no extra bar out there.
True.
There there's no motivation, there you you do get incentive for every day that you come, but there's no there's no additional benefit to work one fifty five. There's no additional say to plan ahead and say, you know what, I'm actually going to try for that extra eighteen days and here's how I'm going to do it. Because you just get something, so if you happen to get eight of those, great. If you get nine of those, great, if you get, you you just, there's just no, there's no additional benefit to really shoot for another bar. So I don't necessarily like that, I I think it doesn't accomplish what we were setting out to accomplish, but it is one way. I mean, if that's what the board, I I don't think there's, we were trying to really incentivize people to really work additional.
There's a benefit, it's just not a large benefit when you see a two thousand dollar difference than a thirty five dollar a day difference. So I think that's the difference. It's it's a smaller amount per day than looking toward the future and and getting two thousand dollars for fifteen day or seventeen days.
Again, let me, I mean, the 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 way that I would like this is kind of how Jane talked about it. I mean, if you approve this, I mean, it's more about just sharing the information so they're aware of it. And even now, as I think about it, my days are a little bit off because I didn't account for the staggered start. And so with that, there may be some modifications that we can come back to you with. But more importantly, let me reach out to our subs. I mean, they've been really good when it comes to this type of thing to see Lyle kind of how you mentioned it, to say that we have two different proposals here. Board approve this proposal, what are your thoughts on this other proposal and then get some feedback.
All right, and I could go with with it. I could actually, I guess, go with a two thousand step, a three thousand step, a four thousand step, a five thousand step and a six thousand step, that gets you.
Yeah.
I'm, I mean.
So you want six steps, you'd go with six steps if we did.
Eighty eighty five, ninety, ninety five, so maybe even a seventy five. We'd have to go to seventy five percent attendance or an eighty eighty two, eighty six, eighty, I mean, we'd have to, we could, we could figure that out.
Just make, just make the bonus amount steps less than two thousand.
You want six steps.
I think that's too much, make them a thousand.
I thought he said thirty six.
Make the steps a thousand dollars each instead of.
Five, six, okay, five steps.
Instead of two thousand each.
That that's doable and that that does accomplish both goals.
No, I'm okay with that. Okay, any more discussion? Okay.
Lyle, Lyle provided one, but there's no second.
Yeah, second.
To the friendly amendment. Reread your amendment, Lyle.
I propose the Board of Education approve the acceptance of the substitute attendance bonus with incremental steps of one thousand dollars for the prescribed number of days worked.
So moved and then second, yeah.
We need to vote on the amendment first and then the total.
So all in favor of the amended item on the agenda?
Aye.
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 Aye, and the chair has reclusive from this, so we pass five zero, thank you.
Thanks, Sue, thanks, everybody. All right, let's take this to item F, which is on page twenty five. And this is our furniture bid approval. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from ISG Architects and approve the new Lowell elementary furniture bids as presented at a total cost of seven hundred seventeen thousand dollars, five hundred, seven hundred seventeen, five hundred and fifty eight dollars and sixty eight cents.
So moved.
Thank you, Jessie, and thank you, India, for the second. And I know we have Matresa here from ISG, she's been super patient tonight. Um so maybe she could come forward and board, is there any discussion? You'll notice that there are five um five different groups that are in this bid, which I actually thought was great that we're sort of spreading that around a little bit with our different vendors and I think that's great, so.
I just had one question for you, um did staff students get opportunity to test out these five options?
They did, yep, I think, I believe Jane had brought them all to the school, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, um Jane had brought them all to the school, I apologize, I'm Matresa, I'm subbing for Jane, she was not able to be here. But um I believe they actually went in shifts, a bunch of school uh teachers and staff came to ISG and kind of sat test a bunch of different things. Um and then we also brought a bunch over to the school and the students got to sit test.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I heard about the, I heard about that.
They had a great time with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So how do these differ from our current furniture, our current furniture, furniture in our current buildings?
Um I believe they're just uh newer, more up to date furniture pieces, um and they'll be used in all the new classrooms.
There were some differences, Lyle, in um there were some desks that could be potted, there were some little stools that we sat on that could be that we have some, they they almost look like a bottle cap around the top that kind of move as opposed to just ex motion ones. I'm just thinking, because I went to ISG and checked them out, so um they're they're nice and bright and colorful. And I thought the thing that I was impressed with was that they're really scaled for the size of our kids. And so what's in a fifth grade classroom isn't going to be in the kindergarten room, which isn't always, you know, I think we've tried in all of our new buildings to do that, but.
Some has some different back features too, the way the way it hit the back, we looked at.
Places to keep their bags, whether they rolled or whether they were stationary chairs.
Do they raise up for, you know, height?
So was the custodial staff involved in terms of which ones are there?
Yes, yep, correct.
And then the other thing to note is that our teachers, you know, they really ask for, they've got the movable desks that will roll so that they can take their, they can be wherever they need to be in the classroom, which, yep, exactly.
Which is different too, and there's really a lot of movement incorporated into the this furniture bid, so. Which, you know, desks and chairs and furniture has really evolved over the time. You take, you know, thirty years ago, you just got a standard desk and a standard chair. And now we went down and when we looked at it, there were, I mean, I think we went, we, those of us who were in facility, I think we were looking at fifteen different chairs maybe and and we tried to narrow it down, so we didn't take all of them. But it it took hours to just even narrow it down, so.
Okay.
There we go. So much calls.
Any other question questions from Matresa, thank you so much for staying.
Yes, of course, of course.
Nope. All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving uh the furniture bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. So that concludes our action items for tonight and I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about um back to school. We had first day today and so we had our kindergarten first graders and our sixth graders and our ninth graders in. We um we do not have any enrollment counts, I know Andrew has has had asked me last week, when could I get enrollment counts? And of course, with the staggered start, it's a little bit harder to tell where we're going to land and so we just don't have those numbers right now. But um you know, look definitely looking looking decent. Um we have had quite a rash of kindergartners enrolling the last uh twenty four hours. So um we had six, six here this morning, so getting started. So we, yep, so we're, our numbers are changing a little bit that way, but um so working on that, we were, I think most of us were out and about and visiting classrooms and visiting uh buildings and it was, it was really great. So um and I I would really commend our HR department, they have really worked hard to make moves already. I know that one of our buildings was right on the edge and we went ahead and made the move and added a a fourth section of one of the grades. And you know, looking at teachers and grabbing, you know, as and getting getting that staffed up. And and it really makes a difference when the students get to start with their teacher on the very first day. And so that, I know that teacher was at the building all weekend, getting the room ready, um just, you know, at the very last minute. And I just was super proud of the staff wrapping wrapping their arms around that new teacher in that particular building and saying, hey, what can I do? Let me help you help you move your things. And and with the staggered start, some of the upper grade levels could be in the classroom with, you know, with those teachers and and really, really support those kids. So I think that was really great. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on enrollment, but I think it was a really first, a for a great first day of school. Tomorrow, we welcome our second and third graders to our elementary, our seventh graders and our tenth graders. So um on that, I would also say too that we are really watching the heat. I know that we've seen, I've seen today already some heat dismissals for tomorrow and and we're pretty much air conditioned except for our high schools. And so I did work with our high school principals today, um asking them to see if we could move staff around. And you know, we have portions of our building that are air conditioned. And so I believe, you know, our, we're going to educate our kids, I don't believe we're going to be able, we're going to need to do an early dismissal tomorrow. But I do think we're going to have to modify and morph if we move, you know, students in in this classroom, they move over to where the juniors and seniors might might be on, might be tomorrow, um just to take advantage of air conditioning and try to keep our kids as comfortable. So I think we're going to be able to do that um tomorrow, but then we'll, we'll see what Wednesday looks like when we have all of our kids back. So uh just a note, I know that our facilities are are looking really great as we got um in our buildings that exist or are not being renovated or remodeled right now, but um the the buildings just look amazing. Our technology department has just been fabulous about setting things up. Our our nutrition staff was there, making sure that they're ready to go. Our custodial staff, oh my goodness, the, you know, who doesn't love a shiny floor? And they're just, they look, they just look wonderful. So um our administrators have worked like crazy, making sure our staff is hired and and our staff is ready, our Paris and our teachers and um our businesses, every, I mean, it's just, it's really been a good day, so we're super happy about that. Lowell is looking good, uh all of our Lowell staff got to go to the new building and do a walk through on Friday, and so that was really nice. I think they really enjoyed seeing it, so we're going to do another one in, I believe, October and let them just take a peek at that and be ready to to do a move over Christmas break and have our students get started in their new building right after winter break. So looking forward to that, I think that was really great. Covid, uh really watching the numbers, we have very few students with Covid right now, but we are watching that closely. We know that in, you know, in the communities, really across the nation, you know, there it can really swing. So right now, we have very low numbers, but um watching that very, very closely. We are still strongly encouraging masks and um and, you know, we're encouraging vaccinations. So I know that's a personal choice and so I'm all, I I say that very cautiously because I I don't, you know, I know people have their own thoughts on that and I certainly understand that, but we, you know, sometimes the um, you know, we we encourage parents to at least consider that. So um two more things about athletics, uh I do want to note that East High won the MVC Valley Division um sportsmanship award for the spring, spring and summer sports, so of course, that's softball, baseball. And um I, let's see, soccer was included in that, yeah, is there anything else? I, it was just, it was amazing. And that process is uh the 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 officials select, they get to vote and they are voting based on based on the coaches, the players and the fans, and so they're rated by the officials. And 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 East High was the winner um for the sportsmanship award, so that's really a great honor. And we did have coaches classic on Monday and so um I I go to that every year and I usually speak at it, but I was unable to go this year because of um some knee surgery. So it, I heard it was amazing and so, were you there?
I was.
Okay, yeah, I heard it was good, so um yes, you were. So anyway, those are just a few comments, we are, you know, we are ready to go, parents, we are started. So make sure your kids are in school and let us know how we can support your registration.
Thank you. No, it's great, great information. So, okay, I'm going to start down here to my left with Ms. India.
All right. Um just a quick comment, um and I've heard many parents just comment on the stagger and they're just hoping we do it every year. They love it, they think it's a great idea. I know it's really helpful to, if you, for myself, who has a freshman coming into the parking lot, they're just not that many, it's intimidating anyway, but then you come in, it's like, oh, there's not that many cars here, you know, so it's just one less anxiety point that you have when you don't have to deal with a crowd of people. So um I just wanted to comment that I've received a lot of feedback that stagger is very helpful for just traffic, even people who don't have kids, but the traffic is totally different when you have the stagger too, so I hope we keep it.
And I would just, sorry, I didn't want to interject, but the there's only really one negative that we've seen so far and I didn't notice it last year as much as this year, but um there are some places, especially mostly at the kindergarten, I think that's real at the elementary, that's really the only place where if a family has a kindergartner and a third grader, they've, they've kept the kindergartner home, the K one is staying home waiting for tomorrow to come and then they'll both start. And so we had, we did have some absences today while they're waiting for their siblings to start tomorrow or maybe even sadly Wednesday. So that was, I mean, that's me being transparent, that's the only thing I've noticed, but otherwise, it is ninety five percent amazing, so.
Well, I had an interesting activity last week, I got to volunteer after a request at work at the area for volunteers to help with packing backpacks for the watered schools. And so I was like, well, I'm going to go get some volunteer hours here at work. But it was a great seed effort that the employees there did to help prepare backpacks of school supply for our children and then, you know, the opportunity to go out and drop those off at the schools. And so uh just appreciation to those in the community that are helping support our kids' need and get, you know, supplies like that that are, you know, can make a difference in the start of school year for our students, so.
And tonight, I just had a little sense of pride in our staff. I mean, I have it all the time, but I just, the extra efforts, Dr. Mohren, and that went into the. Dr. Mohren, and that went into the summer school and pulling it off, and just hearing these different. Um, um, administrators talk, it just made me see the depth that they want these kids to succeed. And we, we can't, if we could, go to a house and pull a student out, you know? Just the efforts that we want to see our kids excel, and it just made me proud to be a part of this district, so. Thank you to everyone who's involved in summer school, in whatever, even the bus drivers, because that's extra. But we just thank you, um, from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure the entire board and, um, just, just. The amount of care you have for kids is remarkable. Thank you.
Aster.
I just had two quick things. Um, one, uh, opening day last Friday. Uh, had an opportunity to attend that again, um, and I see Ms. Baller stepped out, but I wanted to commend her on a awesome job. She did an amazing job stepping in, um, and helping facilitate the opening day, and once again, Manny Scott. Um, so when, when you, um, see and hear groan me and cry. Um, just the, the emotion and, and, you know, and for me, it was more so just. Experiencing some of the things that, um, he talked about it, and, and having those teachers and those administrators. And those support staff, um, that are there for you, uh, during, during those times, so. Uh, it, it definitely hit home. Uh, once again, he, he did an amazing job, so thank you, Dr. Lindeman, um, and team for. Uh, once again, bringing a, a dynamic speaker in, uh, to the district. Um, it's just amazing, amazing, so, uh, I know a few people that were in there crying, so. I held back this year. I, I, I did before. I, I held back this year, but.
I was crying before he even got on the stage.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, it was amazing. It was amazing, um, and relevant, definitely relevant. Um, and I did wanna mention the coaches' classic as well. I did get an opportunity to go to the coaches' classic on Monday, last Monday. Um, and this, I try to, I try to go every year, you know, I'm a big sports guy, and I try to attend every year. But this year, they did something a little bit different. Um, they recognized the coaches in the district for their longevity. Uh, so they actually gave awards, uh, with certificates for, um, years of service. Uh, coaching in the, in the, in the district, um, and they did it, uh, Dan Huff did an amazing job and, and, um. Dr. Pappas and, uh, Tim Moses, um, they listened to feedback from the coaches in the district. Um, and just wanting to be recognized for their service, so they did it in a five-year increment. Um, and it went all the way up to forty-plus years, so they recognized coaches for five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. Uh, all the way up to forty years, and they, um, received a pendant per five years, uh, for service, so I think that. Uh, does a lot, uh, to show appreciation, uh, for coaches. Uh, it's a hard job. It's a hard job to fill. Um, a lot is required, uh, so, uh, kudos to, um, the athletic department. Uh, for putting the coaches' classic on and recognizing your coaches as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyle, I see you writing.
Come back, everybody, and, uh.
Are you, is your mic on? Now it is.
I just wanna pair Sue's comments, uh, basically, uh, summer school, the flexibility that we heard tonight. And the focus on the students, I think, is remarkable, and I would encourage, uh, all those involved to really think. Out of the box to make it, uh, even more attractive and, uh, fun for students in the future, because. I think it's on an ongoing basis gonna be a very integral part of getting students. In a position where they can succeed in the next, in the next grade, and so, uh, and the other is the continuation of encouraging. Our, our four-year students. I always look at the five-year graduation rate as more important than the four-year graduation rate, so. Anything we can do, especially with the number, I don't know, we're, do we even know our graduation rate for this year?
Actually, it doesn't come out till April, so it'll be a while.
So we bumped it, you know, this, this program bumped it about three percent. I don't know what it normally gets bumped, but, but, uh, I think there's an opportunity to. To maybe bump the five-year graduation rate more than we've ever done before, uh, just because of the situation, so. Great work with, with all those people and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thanks, Lyle. And Dr. Mohren, I wanna say the same thing, or the third thing about that, is that I really appreciated, we've heard summer academy stuff before. We've talked about the elementary, but I really appreciated getting the middle school and the high school perspective, and I just wanna reiterate what Sue said. About changing the narrative about what summer school is, so it is an opportunity. It's not a punishment or punitive, so. Um, all right, board, uh, with that, if there's no further business to come before us, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
My, I'm not, not yet. Uh, I'm just gonna say, my director, Williams, over here, look eyeballing me. So I'll start it off, Mr. Williams. India Johnson's gonna run for another. Run for our school board this year. For term, yes.
So you're getting eyeballed.
I was, I was gonna wait.
Well, you can wait. You don't have to say a word.
I'll, I'll run again as well, so I'll be running again for.
We announced.
All right, so.
There's more work to do, so.
Signatures to get. I'm on it.
Thank you.
All right, there being no further business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, good night.
Thank you all.
Yep.